All right, we'll open the meeting. And so we do have a need for executive?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a personnel item in the Police Department, a personal matter involving the Clerk's Office and discussion of negotiations with Omea about a possible land acquisition. Contracts. Can be legal as well.
And you wanted to add the liquor board, correct?
Yes, liquor board.
So I make a motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was that the only amendment? Liquor board?
Yeah, two liquor board.
Executive session.
The second is.
Right, anything on the Select Board meeting minutes of March 3rd? Nothing? Okay. John's got the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
He's snapping.
You know.
I'm just sticking my earring up, not overworking.
Well, you know.
There you go, Joe. The minutes.
How much do we pay you?
The most. They're just signed down here on the.
That's right, or the next page has your, write your name on it. Chad's on his back deck.
Nice out.
Show both his hands?
Yeah.
Doesn't show the table, though.
No, no, no.
Fill the log, Chad.
You got it muted. Uh, I did not.
There it is. All right, any questions on the orders?
Here we have, well, we got four payments for salt there. Total was up to seventeen thousand and better. Is that pretty much going to be the end of it, you suppose, for this year?
We don't know. Your guess on the weather is as good as mine. They're actually calling for a little bit tomorrow night, maybe in the higher elevations in town. But generally speaking, long range is looking better and better. And we are about, I think Chad will remind me, at about seventy thousand now, plus this seventeen that's in the pipeline, that's still below our hundred thousand dollar of salt budget.
Yeah, correct, and our shed's full right now, so.
Oh, good.
We're not, we're not running in the red really then.
No, not yet, anyway.
We're good, we're good, good.
And then how many more payments do we have in the salt shed before?
This is another, I think we've got one tonight, yes? I imagine that there'll be one more large one as they finish up. They have finished as of yesterday for, for, for the most part. Then there will be probably a small one when they do the spring site restoration, which will be seeding and mulching, and then removing the silt fence. So that's going to be small potatoes.
Yes.
Oh, you've got Russo's Plumbing and Heating for forty-one hundred, what broke?
They had several different visits. I know they visited the town on the coldest morning of the year when our heating system wasn't working. It turns out that the teller stats were not functioning, and so those had to be replaced. There's also work at the firehouse and the highway garage. It's one of these things where he accumulates several visits.
And then he builds all. Okay, all right, okay.
Anything else on the orders?
Like Larry Macduff does.
Yeah. Yeah.
John, that's your second queue.
I don't, but anyway, although I need, I just need a, I need some of your water and a squirt gun. And when he doesn't do, I'll just squirt him.
Maybe an electrified seat.
I got a shock, I can bring that in.
We've got three orders here, the original one and two for tonight. After that passes along, I'll give you payroll, Joe. Standing one step ahead.
For a minute.
The crowd.
Well, you know.
In?
So far, for now.
Okay, there's more than I didn't.
Well, keep your staff ready. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're discussing the salt shed project. Nearly complete with the fabric cover fully installed and the front structure being erected along with the folding door. As of yesterday, there was a fourteen-foot clearance with the door brought to its size. At least, at least we had that much of an opening left for us. There will be a sub, what is called a substantial completion site meeting tomorrow morning, Thursday at one o'clock. I'll be there along with the Highway Foreman, the Contractor Casella, our Resident Engineers GPI, and Derek Kennison of V-Trans. Casella has also been working on our Depot Hill Pump Station Replacement Project. And that project is also substantially complete, with the exception of site restoration, mulching, and seeding to be done when the weather allows, just like the salt shed situation. There are still the matters in this sewer-related project of, A, purchasing a portable generator, which will be able to service either of our three pump stations, depending on which one might need the help, and also the matter of installing the air, the automation of the aeration of the sewage system at the wastewater treatment plant. That part of the project will be done a little bit later this spring or summer. The town's consultant will perform an ADA compliance review at town offices tomorrow at ten thirty. This, as you remember, is a prerequisite before the town can become eligible to seek a state grant to replace this broken inclined platform wheelchair lift here at the town offices. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns is going to hold their annual Select Board Institute Seminar. This year it'll be virtually, and it'll take place Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, from nine AM to twelve fifteen. If any of you would like to attend, I put that in quotes, please let me know and we can get you registered. As you know, Madam Chair, town residents had suggested that the town consider building a dog park in town. We have forwarded the idea to the folks at the village farm due to its location and their stated desire to increase visitation and foot traffic. They've declined to adopt the idea for a formal dog park. However, they've made it clear that their property is already hosting many folks walking their dogs. If the board wishes to consider what the town might do in this area, I do have some materials from VLCT, which I'd like to circulate in advance of a future meeting of the Select Board. Is there an appetite to discuss that issue?
If we're in the city, I would, but I don't know. I'm saying reasons I don't hear.
Yeah, I mean, but the only thing I did, I was going to put this in my Select Board remarks, is one of them, but evidently Fair Haven is in the process of, of building a dog park. So, I mean, it's something you could just get some information, what they're doing, just so we had it, and just, you know, so we know.
Well, we checked into it, that's all we asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've got a sizable donation for that, didn't they, Fair Haven?
I don't know, they're putting it out near the airport, I believe.
So for now, it won't, you're a juggler, so consensus to put it on, okay? Thank you for that guidance. Because there are three weeks before our next meeting, it may be necessary to ask some selectmen to come in and sign orders in the interim, depending on payment deadlines. So stay tuned if you might need to get a phone call about that. Depot Hill Road, the Cover Bridge Society has offered the town twenty-five hundred dollars toward the engineering study that we had considered doing, and which is, you know, still kind of in abeyance. We've told them very much thank you for that offer, and if and when we go forward with seeking out an engineering study, we'll certainly make use of that donation. It is also a state obligation of some, of, to some degree, because it is on their list of many, many bridges that need work, along with our Truck Route Bridge. Select Board Chair Alicia Malley has suggested a program to have department heads provide periodic reports to the board, and I've, I'd be happy to put together some kind of a memo with thoughts about it and questions for the board as to how you might want to implement such a program, if you'd like, for the next meeting. Additional thoughts, conference room layout and furniture. Dave and I, before the meeting, talked a little bit about maybe lighter weight, narrower, more flexibly usable tables in place of these big clunky ones that occupy probably too much space in this room. So there are such things as seminar tables that come eight feet long, flexible legs, narrower by about twenty or eighteen inches, sixteen inches, eighteen inches, and we can certainly buy a few of these for less than five hundred bucks. And so unless I hear an objection, we'll do it. It'll get us more flexibility for different kinds of functions in this room.
Yeah.
Very good. Fire Hill Road Bridge Replacement Project. This morning, the town manager and the Highway Foreman met with three GMP employees, our structures engineer, a crane operator, which we would like to have the contractor use due to his experience in these kind of jobs, and Steve Simuluski of Florence Crush Stone, to discuss how to tackle this project near electrical wires, a road, railroad tracks, and a river, and not to mention, again, the overhead lines especially. So the project certainly seems doable. GMP has been very cooperative and may move a couple of poles to give us more room to bring the pieces into place when the time comes. And we all agreed it was good to get together several more months before the project to make preparations and work it through. We're intending to do the project in the summer or fall when the water's at its, you know, relatively low ebb, so we're going to go out to bid in these next few weeks, hire a contractor, and then have the contractor, once again, meet with these same important players to make sure we have a smooth job. We're replacing two rusted steel tube culverts with an upside-down U that's coming in segments, which will sit on poured concrete foundations on either side of the stream. Yes, and then finally, maybe we'll hear from Butch about this, but Dave and I have both heard from Lyle Jepson, who brings us good tidings that COVID money may be coming to cities and towns in Vermont, and lots of information is still not known about what amount we're getting and what the money could be used for. Who knows, maybe Butch has some more to offer on that. That's it.
All right, thanks, John. Does anyone have any questions for John? All right, Select Board member remarks? Do you have any more other than what you?
Yeah, I do. Matt was at Rutland Regional last night. The solar project here at the salvage yard was brought up again. I just told them that we were still, we hadn't finalized anything on, as far as the tree cutting, but the town was in favor of it, it was just a matter, we hadn't settled things with them. And, I mean, it meets everything with a regional plan because it is on a brown field. So, and then, uh, the representative from Brandon, who was Vice Chair of the Regional Committee, has resigned. So Pittsburgh now has the Vice Chair of the Regional Committee sitting here, so not that that's anything big.
Congratulations.
Friends in high places.
So, yeah, so that's about it.
Anyone else have anything? Public comment? Hi.
Hi. So, John, John called me out on the, on the federal COVID money that we, we assume we're getting in the last round of COVID things. It's about two point seven billion dollars total. Last time we got about one point two five, and then we had an interim where we got about a hundred million. So, we're, our Joint Fiscal Office is still trying to figure out the details on how this money is to be expended. The, I, I do though, they have got through the transportation piece, and the money is really restricted as to where it's going, where it's going. It's a, in the transportation piece, a lot of it's going to urban areas. And as an example, in urban transportation, they're, Green Mountain Transit, the big bus group out of Chittenden County, is going to get somewhere north of, uh, eight million dollars, and our suburb, our, our urban transit for the whole rest of the state's going to get somewhere around five. And so the whole bill, that whole portion of the bill, and many other portions of the bill are tailored to more, the more populated areas. We, we know that airports are getting a sizable dollar amount, but the biggest money is going to Burlington International Airport in the tunes of, of millions. The, the last that I heard, the state in local money that's been proposed is still in one lump sum, again, in the millions, and, and maybe more, but we don't have a breakdown on that, and I, I don't know what, I, I, I would, boy, I'm going to say this, and then you can slap me around later. I'd be surprised if they just wrote you a check. Putting it, that very seldom happens, but I'm, I'm hopeful that our two hundred and fifty odd towns, forty-eight towns, will be getting a substantial amount of money for infrastructure improvements and other things. But here again, we just really don't know yet. We just know there's going to be a big substantial amount of money. And our joint, like I said, our Joint Fiscal Office is still reviewing that, and we're getting drips and drabs every day. So I'll stay tuned, I'll keep you folks informed. And when, when I know it, you'll know it.
All right.
Butch, it was brought up last night at, at Regional, mainly because, oh, half to two-thirds of the people there have lousy internet, and it makes for a really tough meeting. Josh Terenzini was there and was talking that probably they needed around three hundred million to get internet to everybody in the state, decent internet to everybody in the state. Do you think any of that money will be able to go to that, to actually do something to improve the state?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's two pots, pots of money that, that we know are within that bill. The, the numbers are still pretty, pretty fussy. You may get some authorization in, in your portions of the bill to improve internet locally. I understand now that all this money has come out, that Comcast and others are very interested in expanding internet to the underserved areas. Surprise, surprise.
Yep.
And, yeah, and, and other, other providers have consolidated, et cetera. So, yeah, there's, there's money, I know there's money in, in the bill for that. I know that the administration is very bullish on expanding internet to the underserved and unserved areas. But here again, I haven't seen a, any, any type of breakdown yet, but I, I know, Dave, I don't know how much it's going to be, but it's going to be a sizable amount. Yeah, I, will it be three hundred million? I, I don't know, I doubt it. You know, one, one thing about getting all this money, it's hard to spend it in a timely manner, just because of the logistics. And I know we ran into some issues when we had the first COVID bill of spending money by the end of December. This money is less restricted on that. It's my understanding we have two years to spend the money, so that will help. But we need, we need people on the ground to be able to spend the money. And as, as you know, Chad can certainly tell you, contractors are at a premium right now, and, and contracting people, so we'll see where it goes. Everything, everything we talk to you now, in, in my opinion, is speculation.
Thanks, Butch. All right, I guess we'll go on to new business then. Discuss repairs to deck of Depot Hill Road.
Yes, Madam Chair, we've got Chad on the video feed. He met onsite with V-Trans, and they had certain ideas on how to repair or refurbish the deck of Depot Hill Bridge. In tonight's materials, you have a picture of how the bridge deck looked before repairs were done, six or seven years ago, with Sean Erickson leading the way. And then we have how it looks now from the recent cover of the town report. Chad, why don't you fill us in on what was discussed with V-Trans and what your proposal might be?
Okay, um, talking with the inspector from V-Trans, he certainly recommended we have the boards going the old direction, the long lengthways. The way they are currently now, they kind of roll with the, as the bridge flexes, they roll with it. But his thought, his other thought was, starting from the outside, you know, instead of like the old way it was seven years ago, the two narrow runners, like doing from each edge towards the middle, leave a gap in the middle, but for his thought was, just so cars don't go off the side, and, you know, it's just safer that way. Which I understand that, but I mean, if we're looking to slow our traffic down going through there, I kind of like the old, the way it was before. You know, I mean, that makes a little more challenge, and, but, that's about it.
That for years.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah. That was two, seven two-by-sixes, so, you know. If you can't drive on that, you shouldn't be driving. Put a two-by-four, make them drive a gal now. You got too much variation in width of vehicles for two-two-by-fours.
So as you can imagine, Chad, pretty much everybody has an opinion on how they'd like to see it done, but it sounds like maybe the consensus is to go back to the way it was with basic widths of those runners, so that we do encourage slower traffic.
Yeah.
Is that fair, folks?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Chad, I know you've been in touch with gang and lumber, you've been, you've been looking at some of his hemlock boards, is that right?
Yep, actually, just received a call today. They're going to start cutting them, and probably by next week, it sounds like we should have them, so we can hopefully, like, first of April, get the project started. And that way, we'll be done with that before they come in for Truck Route Bridge, so.
Do you have a better estimate now of how much time it might take if we're going to do a little bit less than the full width of the bridge?
I guess it, it depends on how easy the current boards come up. I know some of them will pop up pretty easy. But going to shorter or narrower runners, I would, I would think three weeks, we should be pretty good with that.
What's the idea of removing the old boards? We're not just going to put these runners on top of the existing ones?
No. According to the state inspector there, that would just, too much weight, change the load rating on the bridge. We need to remove what we put down last time, and then reinstall the new runners.
It would seem to me that having several layers is not a good idea, because it just makes a trap for moisture. If you've got, you limit your layers, you limit the amount of moisture you're going to have in there for deterioration. The old, the old original, if I'm not mistaken, is the bottom of the bridge is two-by-sixes on edge, all spiked together, and then those runners went lengthways right across the whole, the whole length of the bridge.
Yeah.
You only had one area where moisture could get trapped. And then after you guys took out them runners, what, did you put patches in there or something on top of the floor?
No, we just put those, the new, um, the new boards over. We didn't, we didn't do anything when we tore up the runners.
You're just going to clean it down to the basic floor and then put the new runners right on top?
Yeah.
Seems like that would be a damn good fix.
Dave, go ahead.
So I guess I'm confused. Which isn't uncommon. So you're, you're tearing out the complete floor that's in there?
Yes.
And then you're going to put what, new board, new two-by-sixes on edge all the way through, and then runners on top?
No, no, just the, just the runners, once, once the boards that are on there now are off.
Oh, so they're, so what have you got, so you've, all right, so I guess, so you've got the boards on edge are still there, and then you laid another layer of boards on top?
Yeah, the boards you drive on are on top of the two-by-sixes that are on edge.
Okay, all right, okay, so that makes sense. I, yeah, I didn't realize that's what.
Kind of getting to the subfloor, if you want to.
Right, so now is that plywood on the subfloor, too?
Yeah, uh, well, no, the plywood, well, no, I mean, that plywood has replaced the two-by-sixes that we originally installed.
But there's, the subfloor, which is on edge, is still under the plywood?
That's, yeah, yeah, that's all there, it looks like.
That floor is still good.
For now, for now, yeah.
Okay, no.
It's not great.
Maybe you'll discover some things when you get under that top layer.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. Hopefully not. And probably that first plywood section, when you enter the bridge from a transfer station side, most likely will leave that, only because, um, that, that end of the bridge, it's not, that main deck isn't in great shape right there. You know, so there's not really a lot to lag the boards down to.
So, so.
Go ahead. No, 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 I was just going to say, I think we end up having the same problems coming onto the bridge with those boards getting loose, being loose, because there's, on that end of the bridge, there's not a lot.
So I guess my, my comment to that would be, so, and how many feet into the bridge are you talking?
That's just that.
Eight, ten feet at the most?
No, no, four.
So, so would it, when you, you tear that up? would it be an intelligent thing for us to do to replace those two by sixes that are on edge for that four feet? If, if, what I'm saying is, I think what's happening is people come flying in and they're pounding those ends. So, so would it make sense to change that first four feet of boards that are on edge while you're right there and have it fixed?
Yeah, I mean.
You're not talking a lot, I mean, you're not talking a lot of expense to change those.
No, it'd be worth, yeah, it'd certainly be worth looking into and.
Because you're saying there's nothing to lag to there, which tells me they're pretty rotten.
Yeah, they're rotten and there's a little bit of gap because it's kind of runs at an angle. And plus that end slaps down. We've tried shimmying underneath the beams. If you like, if you ever get underneath the bridge when a car goes by, you'll see there's just enough of a gap that it bounces right there.
Yeah. I know it bounces if a car goes through it when you're in it.
Oh, yeah, especially when they're.
When they're flying. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I just, I mean, I just think we ought to look into replacing certainly on, I mean, if it's mostly on the transfer station end, I mean, I don't know how the other end is, if that's all solid. But I think it's something we ought to seriously consider.
That's, that's not beyond your skill set, is it? Just to do a little carpentry there? Or is it?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, I, I've never done it. I don't know how easy it is to remove them and reinstall. You know, I don't know if it's something we, you know, just pry out and, but it's, I got time to look into it and ask the right people questions about it and. I mean, yeah, I, I agree. It's definitely worth doing that.
I've got pictures of the bridge being repaired, its interior with a couple of guys shown on it that look like maybe kind of a local contractor 20, 30 years ago. Just doing some carpentry. And so maybe if you don't feel absolutely comfortable, another contractor could be found to help you with that subfloor. That doesn't sound like it'd be a big job for them. And then you get back to work on your running board project.
Yep. Yeah, no, definitely look into. I mean, I agree. I think if there were newer boards on that end, it definitely would make, you know, this last longer, this part of it.
You're doing all this other work. It doesn't make much sense to.
Kind of like a shame to put no runners on top of bad rotten boards. If it's just a short section. Get that out, replace it.
Replace it and then put your runners and. Even if you, you're right, because I mean, what are you, you're talking four feet at two inches. That's not a lot of boards.
It's more tiny.
It's more tiny, yeah, yeah.
How, how wide is that bridge?
15 feet?
15, yeah.
15, so you know, 16 footers would reach the whole thing and you wouldn't even have spiced them. You'd run one piece right straight across.
Yep.
All I'd have to do is take a sawzall and go down through and cut right off, pull out a whole section and just replace it.
Well, it's, yeah, taking it out is going to be easy enough. It's a matter of how they, how they fit. If they fit under stuff, how you're going to get them all back in. That would be the.
Slap up against each other and they're all nailed together.
No, but what I'm saying is, once you get to that last one, how do you get it in if you can't?
Like it's a key sort of thing.
Exactly. Yeah.
I think Sam Carrer is the one that fixed that bridge.
It sounds like we have a general marching plan and maybe you and I can talk about contractors to help on the ends there, Chad.
Okay, yep, sounds good.
I know Sam Carrer put those beams right.
All right, and then we'll move into, so the condition of the town office parking lot.
Yeah, I've, I've just noticed it recently, a lot of cracking pretty deep through the asphalt. And I asked Chad about whether that's anything crack ceiling could help us with or whether that's so far gone that you might want to reconstruct the parking lot. What did you think about it, Chad?
Well, right now I have, I spoke with the company that does our crack sealing fresh coat and I actually mentioned the parking lot to him as well. He's going to come up in the next couple of weeks and take a look at it. I'll get his opinion. I know you know, once the frost is out of the ground and stuff, then we have a better idea on that. You know, there's a certain, certain size crack that's like beyond doing a crack repair.
Right.
So, so kind of waiting for his, his opinion on that.
The concern I had was that just that they were so deep through the asphalt.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, if, if they can be filled. Fill it and reseal the driveway again like it was five, five years ago, maybe, five, six years ago, we did the sealer on that. So. But yeah, a couple of weeks, hopefully we'll, you'll be here and we'll take a look at it.
Does that drain still plug up and it flood? Was it extreme water or is it?
No, we, we changed the on the lawn there where it drained out. We replaced that quite a few years ago.
Yeah, at one time it used to flood there.
That could have been the ice ring.
Hell there. All right.
Thank you very much, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Sorry to, sorry to interrupt happy hour.
All right, still fine. Have a good night.
You too, bye.
Thank you.
All right, review and approve draft application for recertification of the transfer station.
Transfer station certifications last 10 years, our last one was in 2011. The transfer station attendant Wayne and I have worked with the solid waste district folks. And they've put together the draft that was in your packet. And they're just seeking town approval to submit it on our behalf.
So is that a consensus or a vote?
I think it'd be helpful for the minutes, actually, in case they want to know that the town select board was comfortable with it.
Well, they got to do anything to it.
We just kind of updated it from 10 years ago. Lots have changed, you know.
Second, all in favor, say aye. And then discuss the potential acquisition of land for relocated Florence Fire Substation.
Yeah, this has moved from the realm of, you know, of an enthusiastic dream to reality. Now that Omea has expressed a willingness to sell the town at a very good price, a piece of land about two acres in size near the intersection of West Creek Road and Kendall Hill for the site of a relocated Florence Fire Substation. The current substation is located on Omea property. And due to occasional conflicts with trucking traffic, railroad traffic, and the desire to respond to any problems at Omea from away. Those are some of the reasons that the fire department has liked the idea of relocating it. Omea understands our desire and they have given us a thumbs up. And what they've also given us is a draft purchase and sale agreement, which we've run by our attorney for his input. And we can certainly discuss this further in executive session.
Okay. All right, thanks. I guess that's all we have. So recess select board and open as liquor board.
Yes, we have two sets of applications, all of which both seek a first class, third class, and outside consumption liquor license renewal. First is Roland Rooster LLC, doing business as Cluckin Cafe and Culinary Institute. The second is Hilltop Tavern Inc., doing business as the Pittsburgh Pub and Grill.
I have a watered down version.
Yes, you do.
Literally. I make a motion that we approve both of these.
All in favor, say aye.
We do have signatures which we will need on both sets. You will see yellow stickies. And you're to sign on the left hand side where it says.
Oh, we can't sign on the right again?
You can. It would be out of the, outside the lines.
I mean, it would be better if there was.
A little more, yeah, a little more room.
We all have pretty big signatures too, I've noticed.
Yeah.